And hereby call this. City Council meeting July 12, 2022 to order will stand up and we'll do the flags. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call. We don't have everybody here.
All right, Councilor Drago. Councilor Gordon is asking her. Councilor Pearson?
Here.
Councilor Williams?
Present.
Councilor Beagle?
Present.
Council President Prophet?
Here.
And Mayor Keeper?
Here.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes. We'll go to May 3, 2022, City Council Regular Meeting. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes as presented through May 3, 2022.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about it? Hearing done. Do a roll call.
Councilor Drago?
Yes.
Councilor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Approve.
Council President Prophet, sorry.
Yes.
And Mayor Keeper?
Yes. We'll move to May 5, 2022, City Council Special Meeting.
Mr. I move to. Approve of May 5, 2022, City Council Special Meeting.
I'll say. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Having hearing them, we'll go to a roll call, please.
Councilor Drago?
Yes.
Councilor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Approve.
Prophet?
Yes.
Yes. May 17, 2022, the City of Boardman Budget Committee Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I take a motion that we approve the City of Boardman Budget Committee meeting on May 17, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Drago?
Yes.
Councilor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Approve.
Council President Prophet?
Yes.
Yes. We will manage June 7, 2022, City Council Meeting Budget Hearing.
Mayor, I move to the set of minutes of the regular meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Drago?
Yes.
Councilor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Approve.
Council President Prophet?
Yes.
And Mayor Keeper?
Yes. We'll now move to the formal proceedings, the public hearing for tomorrow, Interchange Area Management Plan, IAMP update. The public hearing on a TSP 2022-001 is called to order. A TSP 22-001, City of Boardman, Morrow County, and the Oregon Department of Transportation, holders of the right-of-way Port of Morrow applicant. The subject property is described as the Port of Morrow Interchange and the intersection to the north with Columbia Avenue. The area is zone service center to the south and light industrial to the north. This amendment proposes to update Section 7 of the adopted interchange area management plan and focuses on changes on the north side of the interchange. Criteria are found in the Boardman Development Code, Chapter 4.1. Types of applications and review procedures specifically 4.1.600 Type 4 procedures. The content of the hearing, the public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. We will have a staff report, public testimony in the following order. The applicant, any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, the applicant's rebuttal if any. Then we will close the public hearing. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the City Council has a specific question. The City Council may ask questions of staff, after which the City Council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The City Council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep your testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantiative criteria. Criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the City Council. Raise it or wave it. Failure to raise an issue is sufficient detail to allow the City Council and the parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the City Council to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Disclosure. Now I ask any, I ask the members of the City Council to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Do I have any, any individuals or council managers that wish to abstain at this time? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the City Council's impartiality? Staff report. Planning official Carla McLean will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Keeper. So the, the information that you need is in your binder of your special hearing. On this is the package, this mostly representative packet that is posted and that you received last week on Tuesday or Wednesday when we emailed it out. What you have before you is the result of about three and a half or four years' worth of work, maybe longer. The current Port of Morrow Interchange Area Management Plan was adopted in 2011, give or take. It was co-adopted by both the City of Boardman, Morrow County, and then also adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, the commission that has oversight for the Oregon Department of Transportation. The applicants in this, as you noticed, are those who hold right-of-way include the City of Boardman. It also includes Morrow County and the Oregon Department of Transportation. And those three entities, along with the Port of Morrow, were signed towards to the intergovernmental agreement, which was attached as part of the packet that was provided to you. And that intergovernmental agreement was signed in 2019. How this update process started, and some of you may recall, that the westbound off-ramp of the Port of Morrow Interchange started having some early morning backups that were, were longer than the queuing space of the off-ramp and often caused backups into the travel lane of Interstate 84. That prompted discussions between the Port of Morrow and the Oregon Department of Transportation. They came up with some interim solutions that included shift changes and realigning work, work times for various people within the port. But at the same time, it started discussions between ODOT and the Port of Morrow about what an actual on-the-ground improvement might look like that would also help address that process. ODOT and the Port of Morrow spoke for a bit, and they brought in other parties, particularly Morrow County and the City of Boardman. At that point in time, just, I'm just gonna give you some full disclosure. At that point in time, I was planning director at the, at Morrow County. And so I was involved with the process from the beginning for the port, or for the county. After I left the port, so there was a lot of discussions when I was still at the county. Karen was often at those meetings. And we also talked, as we talked about the update to the interchange area management plan, conversation was, do we also need to have any conversations about the south side of the interchange? And, and the agreement was no. The interchange area management plan adequately addressed the needed improvements on the south side of the freeway, particularly some minor realignments of, of Laurel Lane, and then the improvement of Gates Lane and the installation of loop roads. And of course, fast forward three years, and we're seeing the work that, that work is now happening. The conversation also at the time engaged with Umatel Electric to talk about the utility improvements they needed to see in the area became a bus conversation. I left the county and then went to work for the Port of Morrow as a consultant. And I assisted and drafted the application that's before you tonight as a consultant for the Port of Morrow. So tonight, I'm gonna work in two roles. I'm gonna sit here as the staff for the, for the City of Boardman. And I'm also gonna work to help present this from the perspective of the port as the applicant. So please bear with me as I change hats once or twice. Where we are is to the adoption phase of the project. The Port of Morrow hired Killson Associates. We've been working with Matt Huber. All of the technical work has been done by a traffic and planning engineer. So, but it, this is planning level work. This is not design or construction level work. This is a planning document. It is conceptual. So as we went through the planning process, and this goes back really to the 2019 timeframe, there were several options that we looked at relative to how we could address necessary improvements on the north side of freeway. We looked at peanuts, and we looked at roundabouts, and we looked at lights, and we looked at a lot of different things. And what's really in front of you is a planning document that includes all of that in the technical memorandum. But in the update to Section 7 really focuses on one refined improvement. And again, planning level, so we, there is, if you go into the, the Section 7 document and look at what's, the page number in the bottom right-hand corner is 78. That is representative of what we've identified as the potential improvement to the interchange on the north side. There's very little change south of the interchange. The improvements in, in for the realignment of, of Laurel and the improvements to Gates Lane, those are not changing. There's nothing in, in the Section 7 that changes what is proposed and can happen to that portion. There is a, on the eastbound off-ramp, there is a proposed additional lane to allow for both left turns and straight throughs, as well as a right turn lane. But most of the improvements are under the, under the freeway structure itself and the roundabout. And what you'll notice is that the westbound off-ramp now allows you to enter into the roundabout or to actually take up what looks like a U-turn and be going westbound off the freeway to going eastbound onto Columbia. It'll realign Columbia. It'll pull it closer to the interchange. And again, this is design level, so the actual location of that might shift. But it is generally identified, we did enough work to know that this can handle a WV67 truck. So the majority of trucks that go in and out of the port that would use this interchange would be able to use this roundabout. It would also be designed so that if you needed to, you could put, you could put flaggers out there and run a truck right over the middle of it. So not unsimilar to the roundabout that's out in the middle of the port. If you've ever been out there, there's a roundabout out there now, and you can drive through the middle of it if you need to. But it's a huge inner, it's a pretty large roundabout. And, and this is representative of a pretty substantial circle. And it is designed as an oval to account for the five legs, because this is not a four-legged roundabout. It's a five-legged roundabout. So we're now in the adoption phase. And just like the current IAMP, we have two jurisdictions that are reviewing this, and then three jurisdictions that will adopt it. And so we've been through the City of Boardman's Planning Commission that they met on June 15. You do have before you a recommendation to adopt. It also went to the county's planning commission on June 28. And they also provided to the Board of Commissioners a do-adopt recommendation. And now we're here tonight before you. And while I will ask you at the end of this to, to provide an affirmative motion, if you feel so inclined, we are not culminating that tonight with an ordinance. My proposal is that we wait until we get through the public hearings that are still to be held with the Board of Commissioners. Those are scheduled for early August. Once they've done their adoption, then we will come back and do our adopting ordinance here. And the reason for that is I don't anticipate any changes. But should any changes be made, we don't want to adopt and then have to come back and go through that process a second time. It's just easier to do it, to get to the decision tonight and then formalize it once we know that the county Board of Commissioners is, is gonna provide the same kind of affirmative action. So it's a pretty high overview, but I'm gonna stop there and just ask if you have any questions. I think most of you are familiar with the interchange. I'm sure you've driven through it once or twice. You might be aware of what's not working actually on the north side.
So this interchange is hoping to happen with the three entities paying for it and hoping that the state gets in some money? Is that what I got from it?
No, that's on the funding side. So with transportation projects, you can't go seek your funding until it's in your local transportation system plan. So the port has been, the, the port has been, what's the best way to say this? They've been walking and talking the project. They've been seeking funding. But in order to become funded, it has to be adopted into the local transportation system plan. And that would be both the cities and the counties. The port is seeking funding for this. They're seeing, they're doing the grant process at the federal level. I don't see a request to the city to fund any of this. This will be state and federal funding for this improvement. So no, I don't foresee a request to fund this. And this is not an inexpensive project when we get to design and construction.
Because I think this was talked about like two years ago.
Yeah, it's been on the radar screen for about four years.
So. So basically, you're just, we're here to, to update.
The interchange area management.
And then it's.
The planning.
That's the first, that's kind of like the step that we have to do, and then we find the money.
Yeah, yeah. You can't, you can't, in Oregon, you have to have your project in your local TSP before you even have consideration in STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program, or for any of the other funding programs that ODOT has. And, and because ODOT is the funnel for federal funds as well, the same requirements apply.
On figure 7 dash 2?
Yes.
If I read this correctly, D, G, and F are gonna be hard surface for
Yes.
truck traffic or vehicle traffic. And then you're going to reconfigure by C to take the line of sight a little further back?
Right. So just to be clear, there's nothing changing in figure 7.2. This is the same figure 7.2 that's in the current IAMP. Nothing is changing in this. And as is with most planning documents like this, it is a planning configuration. So you'll know that when we, actually, we built this pretty, pretty close to what it was proposed. But when we started having the conversations three years ago about how we might build these loop roads, there are a lot of options that were provided. And ODOT's response was, we don't care what you do with the loop roads themselves, as long as your connection points are where they're identified in the plan.
So, and, and to marry this up with the, the one before with the roundabout, that area, I guess, off of F and D coming around, is that little interchange area there?
Right. So you can see the north area in there in the bottom right-hand corner of the map.
Right.
So north, you're looking towards the freeway there. Yeah.
Right, I see the off-ramp from P to four. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
But it's gonna totally change that entrance to the port there.
It is, it is. It really makes a big change to how, because currently at that intersection, and you know, there's a lot of people, they made some significant improvements to that intersection five, six, seven years ago. Time kind of, I kind of lose time in that. You know, they widened, they striped it differently, they put the stop signs. And people still don't know how to maneuver that, what, they still see people running through stop signs where there should be stopping, and, and they're not. So. But they did a beautiful entry feature there, nice, nice rock and all of that. So, yeah, it's gonna change that. But it also gives them an opportunity to pull that closer to the interchange and people won't be stopping and eating, see it. It'll be a different, it'll be a different dynamic kind of roundabout environment, but.
It will take some getting used to those.
Yes.
Especially for the larger vehicles.
Yeah. And so the other thing I would show you on that, on figure 7.1, the yellow line that you see through there. And thanks for letting me do this, put it in color, because without coloring, you wouldn't see that. That is a pedestrian feature. And so one of the requirements, as we went through this process over the last couple of years, is for the ODOT process, they have a, an agency or a subcommittee to the Oregon Transportation Commission that's called the Mobility Advisory Committee. And it's made up of a really diverse group of people and, and organizations. So they represent, there's the trucking industry is represented. People who have an interest in bikes and pedestrians are, are represented, represented. The different subcomponents with the ODOT, they basically look at proposals like this under a couple of different statutory and administrative rule provisions. And so the bicycle and pedestrian people said, how are you addressing pedestrians here? And that's what that yellow line represents, is a future potential pedestrian connection. I don't want to lose that.
Are they, gonna piggyback on your comments there. Where it crosses the on-ramp and the off-ramp, are they proposing some sort of identifier? You know, like flashing lights or something for?
So this is a planning level document. We're not at design. So that will come up through design. And my guess is, with everything that I've seen recently relative to highways and crossings with pedestrians, there'll be some kind of automated feature that will be installed there. But again, that is a design consideration, and it's a part of the planning level.
Then all the staff report?
That would be the staff report.
Are there any other questions in regards to the staff report? Is there any additional correspondence beyond those items included in the staff report? Okay, so we're in public testimony. The applicant has already presented it. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against this application? Does anyone have any neutral testimony?
I don't, I don't wanna, is your next one agencies? I'm sorry, I kind of lost, I've lost where we are. So we do have an ODOT representative on, on Zoom tonight, and I, I want to make sure she has an opportunity to provide any input that she may have. So.
Hi, my name is Teresa Peniger. I'm the planning manager for Region 5, ODOT, out of La Grande, 312 Island Avenue. And as Carla mentioned earlier, we've been involved with this project for some time. And we've been there at the very beginning and have been working with the port, the city, and the county to come up with the solution here that is being presented. We have provided our traffic engineers and our interchange design engineers to provide input into the development of the plan revisions. And we just, you know, and assisted with getting it through the Mobility Advisory Committee. After the adoptions, the local adoptions, we will be taking it forward, as mentioned, to our Oregon Transportation Commission for final adoption. And then it will be identified as an update to the original interchange area management plan. And we'll make sure it gets filed and recorded appropriately for future reference as the city or county or port or whomever goes forward with seeking funding, including ODOT from federal highways or wherever, you know, having that ability to reference the document that we have gone through a planning process to approve or to recognize the concept that would be seeking funding for.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Teresa. And I guess we have, we're at the, does the applicant wish to provide a rebuttal?
No reason.
So having, coming to that end, I hereby close this hearing. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Does staff need to respond to a question or an issue raised by the testimony?
No.
Does the City Council have any questions to the staff? Is there any discussion by the City Council?
I was listening to some of the discussions back in 2019, and I was along for the ride in maybe 2011 and 12. But we talked about maybe move part of the mountain to make part of this. Is that an visibility going back underneath the?
So you're talking about as you come off the westbound, yes, there, there has been a lot of talk that there's gonna be a lot of sand that's gonna have to be moved to make that, 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 basically that U-turn happen. Yeah.
That automatic right turn.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, and again, this is planning level. We are not yet to design level. That's gonna be the next stage, and it will be interesting.
All right, I'll get back to my own lane.
No, you're good. You're good.
Well, I think I'd like to point out too, that if you look, that, you know, underneath the freeway now, we're, we're taking every available inch under there to make that turn lane, the third lane under there. So, you know, because nobody wants to build two another overpasses for the freeway right there. So it's gonna be tight in that get to, to construction stage.
Is, is that gonna change the height restrictions at all?
I don't think so probably, but I just think that, you know, if you drive through there, you need another lane. So.
So you do bring up, Councilor Drago, an interesting question, because freight raised questions about, I never get them in the right order, but it's the high, heavy, and wide?
High, wide, heavy.
Okay, high, wide, heavy considerations. And, and there was a lot of conversation. And we worked, you know, again, I mean, put my port representation hat on here for just a minute. We worked from, from the port perspective to say very clearly that most of the high, high, wide, and heavy loads are not gonna come through this interchange. I mean, unless they're coming westbound and are gonna go eastbound and are gonna be able to make that U-turn, they're probably not gonna use this interchange. Because to get through, to get under this interchange already would be difficult for high, wide, and heavy. High is not gonna make the clearances when you drive under it. And we see that already when large things have moved through this portion of Interstate 84. In some cases, if they can't go under, they come off and go back on, or they go from one side of the freeway to the other for a bit and come back. So we, we spoke quite clearly, or we tried to be very clear, that we didn't. So we, we spoke quite clearly, or we tried to be very clear, that we did not anticipate that this would be specifically a high, wide and heavy interchange. That there are, it's better to come in off of Highway Seven Thirty and come in Lewis and Clark than to come in off of this interchange. And there are actually instances, we're coming in off the city interchange and making some interesting maneuvers through town is better than this interchange. So we're not gonna get to high, wide and heavy, there's just not, and I don't think there's enough capacity to get to where this would function fully for that, for that, for that reason, yeah.
I do have a question. There, so it seems to me like, it used to be the olden days, you could only, you could only have one little thingy bag on the back of your truck. But now I see, driving down the freeway, two or three hooked to the tractor. And will this accommodate that kind of length of load?
That's a really good question. I know that when we modeled what you're seeing, when what was modeled here would accommodate a standard W, what is it, WB sixty-seven. So would it accommodate a double, you know, whether a little shorter and there's two of them, probably. Would it accommodate a triple? I think if the driver was really competent.
Well, I'm just curious, because I, I think that that's becoming more.
Yes.
Than it ever used to be.
Right. And again, I think, I think when we get to design, we're gonna get to those better answers. But I think there's also a recognition that there's already limited, the way this is already built, there are limitations. And so we're just gonna have to figure out how to build within those limitations. And then look at what we do maybe eventually at the, you know, the bombing range road, Seven Thirty interchange. The Gary Neal dream was that that was the interchange that flew into the port, and we couldn't get there, and maybe someday we can. Or maybe there's a better option for an interchange actually on Highway Seven Thirty, so that the Lewis and Clark intersection becomes an interchange. But those are all future planning efforts. You know, they're, they're out there, I think you have to see how the port grows, what happens, where does development lead, yeah. Those things aren't lost though, I mean, there are people who are having those conversations where they should be having that.
I just noticed that one highway that I underused to.
Yeah.
There any other questions? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to adopt or the interchange area plan update?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt the Port of Morrow interchange area management plan update to Section Seven and direct staff to generate the adopting ordinance, once approval is obtained from the Morrow County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second. Okay, is there any discussions?
All right, Council Drago.
Yes.
Council Pearson.
Yes.
Council Williams.
Yes.
Council Beagle.
Approved.
Council President Proctor.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Financial report, month ending May third, first, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Freddy, you have a finer truth for ending May thirty-first, with just one more month left to report on our fiscal year. It was not in, I mean, it was an ordinary month. Our interest rates have been increasing a point zero five percent, approximately every month. So we're starting to see that fine a little bit. Not much else, I want to point out a financial statement, but in finance, I do want to update you on, we do have an RFP, a request for proposal currently open for auditing services. Our current auditors are unable to provide the services that we need, and so we currently have a request for proposal open. So I think it closes the twenty-fifth of this month, so we'll see what proposal we get in and where do you want it to be. And we have started our geo bond projects. We will have some resolutions, further down some action, action items, but I'll explain them a little bit now. Oregon Senate passed the law that said it's normal practice for you to retain money from the contractor, because you want to ensure that they complete the project. So usually it's about five percent that you retain, and then once the project is completed, you pay them that retention. Well, Oregon said, you know, now we want you to put that in an escrow account that's interest-bearing, and when you pay out that retention to the contractor, you pay it with the interest. It's law, so it's something that kind of has to do with that. That's what my resolutions that are considered before, and I guess the reason is we have started our geo bond projects, water and wastewater simultaneously. So that's why they're all here at one time for you. They are all gonna be short-term accounts, because as soon as they're done with their part of the project, we'll be paying it out. And the only thing I wanted to mention on that is, I know we typically, for signers on our accounts, we have the entire city council be a signer. But with these being such short-term accounts, probably six, nine months at the most. And I know how hard it is sometimes to get every single city council to go in and sign the signature cards. I was gonna mention that we want to reduce the amount of signers just so that we can get these escrow accounts going. And where we're not gonna be cutting checks out of these or anything, it's gonna be one check at the end and. That's all I wanted to mention.
That was May thirty-first, or was that for both of them?
The May thirty-first, the June thirtieth are not in the packet. That will be the threshold.
Is there any questions about the financial report, month ending May thirty-first? And then we're scratched at the thirty. We'll move on to the public comment section. We have pre-arranged presentation, the LOC yearly survey.
Let's, let's move that down, way down to after we do resolutions, because that's, I hope that we have some discussion about that. And so let's do Mike Lee's, and let's do the resolutions.
Okay, so we'll do the LOC yearly survey after the, after resolutions. Mike Lee's, you are up.
You need counsel, mayor, staff. Thanks for having me, to see me, to share my screen. But there's, first off, I'd like to make a clarification on last month's presentation. There was a misinterpretation of some of the information, so. So we talked about the, the ground, the nitrate levels in the groundwater monitoring wells, the wastewater treatment facility. And want to focus on this upgrading monitoring well fifty-two, which for reference, just, I guess, to back up a little bit, there's four monitoring wells out of the wastewater treatment facility. One up gradient of the lagoons, one down gradient of lagoons, and then one up gradient of circa fifty-two and one down gradient of circa fifty-two. So the one I'm gonna clarify this evening is the nitrate levels in the upgrading monitoring well circa fifty-two. And those have been historically, we've taken three tests, but there's also other monitoring wells in that area, and they're historically low. So the clarification is that it is believed that those monitoring wells are, are low due to influence from the canal, because the canal is inherently low in nitrates, because that water comes from the Columbia River. And the, the irrigation district continually tests the, the water coming into that irrigation canal, and it's consistently below one milligrams per liter. And so with canals, there is seepage out of the canal, and with its proximity adjacent to the canal, it is believed that the lower nitrates are a byproduct of influence from seepage from, from that canal, so. That was the clarification.
Can I say something about that?
Yes.
Okay, part of it was that people misheard him and thought that he was saying that the nitrates were also high in that well, and they, they aren't, and he's explaining to you why they in that particular well, they're not high, that, that because of the canal, that water is practically zero, and so it helps that. So we just want to clarify that that we understand that the irrigation district is not adding to the pollution problem, I think would be the long and short of that.
Do you have any questions on that? So, secondly, so as everybody knows, there, the collector well number two recently tested positive for E. coli. And so on top of that, however, the, the distribution system, the water that is distributed to the residents of Ordment has continually tested negative. So, so what does that mean from, from the resident standpoint? So the city is required to meet a certain level of treatment, and those standards are enforced by the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services. On top of that, the city submits all their sample records to Oregon Health Board. So there are notification criteria when it comes to detection levels or E. coli call forms, a number of different things. So you may wonder why there was no notification sent out, and that, and the reason for that is because the city's drinking water system is meeting all the treatment requirements necessary. And that there were no, there was non-detex in the distribution system, so the city is continually, continually testing the source water coming out of collector well number two. They're also continually to test the, the water in the distribution system, so. Just a little information on the city's water treatment system. The city disinfects their water coming from the source with chlorine. And the way chlorine disinfection works, you have to have a certain level of contact time with the water and the chlorine before it's distributed. And there's criteria that is set by the state, and the city is meeting all that criteria. And, and so the city's water is safe to drink. The city's gonna continue to monitor and test the, the source water, the distribution water, and, like, say, are there any questions on, on that?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Yes, would you? The results of the test that the city is constantly doing is how?
Is what?
How old the results when they come back? Is it two months, three months?
No, I think they were within a week.
Thank you.
I think there was some, I don't know if this was part of your question, but in our report, you know, there, someone asked about why it would say nineteen, twenty fifteen, sixteen. And that part of that report that we sent out to the water, the residents, only is required every nine years. So fifteen, sixteen was the time, but that has nothing to do with what we're doing back then.
That's why I asked for clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's certainly particulates or constituents or certain parameters of water that the city tests for, and there's certain durations that are associated with each parameter. So as long as those tests are, are meeting the criteria, they only have to test every so often. So. Any other questions? Last, we discussed quite a bit about the nitrates in the city's drinking water, so just to give an update, the city's been continuing tested, testing the distribution system for nitrates. And the last round of tests were all consistently around four point four to four point six, which was different from the previous round of testing. And I spoke with the state engineer about that, and he speculates that the, the reason for the, the variance in, in the, the first round of testing was due to all the rain that we received. And that's, the reason for that speculation is that basically all that rain was flushing out the nitrates. Or Mother Nature was not land applying it at agronomic rates. So anyway, that's his speculation as to why there were such fluctuations within the distribution system. Any questions on that?
Yeah, how often are we doing those nitrate testings? Do we do that once a month, once a week? Or how, how often are those?
So state regulations are, are monthly.
Monthly.
When the, the city has, I think, two tests below fifty percent, which would be five milligrams per liter, it goes back to every three months. So if, if you go back to, or if the city tests again at above fifty percent, it'll go back to monthly tests until it's full of eighty percent.
And we are testing anyone who has concerns, correct?
Oh, yes.
I thought.
I think there was around twenty tests taken throughout Ordment, the entire city.
City of Ford. And, and those results indicated that they were all below five?
They were all between four point four and four point six milligrams per liter.
And some of those, we even went and tested, you know, like, ahead, you know, like, their neighbors ahead and behind, you know, trying to figure out why you would be high and to see if you were or weren't, and there doesn't seem to be any correlation to that.
It comes back to how much water somebody uses and the age of that water that's in your personal, like, house. So, yeah, in your pipes. So just one community might use more water than another community, such as same as one house might use more water than another house. And so that, the water in your houses was taken from the collector well, um, from the collector well at a certain time period. And so if you had a higher nitrate than your neighbor, then you had a different age of water that came out of the collector well.
So if I understand this, you're saying that standing water has a better chance of getting a higher reading?
No.
Than water that's used regularly?
The age of water has, has no bearing on the nitrate concentration. It's, it's the, the nitrate concentration when the water was pumped out of the collector well. So if you pump the collector well one day at, and it was five milligrams per liter, and that made it to your house, and then the next day the collector well pumped in a six milligram per liter and went to your neighbor's house, then they would test it a six and you would test it a five. That makes sense.
You're gonna know more about water than you ever wanted to know.
No, that's true. That's something that keeps me alive. I want to know.
Well, and we we are working very diligently on this issue for sure.
So it's it's the city continually works with the Oregon Health Authority. They're they're good working partners, so. So if there are any other questions on that? So quick construction update, Laurel Lane and Loop Road. Contractors going to be finishing up in the next couple of weeks. They're they're pouring the concrete colors around the utilities, the sewer manholes, the the cleanouts. And then they're going to come in and stripe it and put up the permanent signing. And then after that, they'll hydrose it and they'll be done. So it's coming to a conclusion. If you got a chance to get out there, but the road looks good.
To anticipate them being done by one August?
I really close, yeah. The wastewater system. Not much change there. They're still moving dirt, building the good. They've moved all the dirt they can at the site. Now they're they're moving and they're borrowing dirt from the same site, but it's yeah, consistently moving there every day. But they are scheduled to be finishing out, but in the and then the water system improvement projects. They've brought down the collector well three has been constructed and the the general contractor that's going to be constructing the collector well will be moving in later this month and and beginning that construction. Yeah, it's really be pretty cool. We'll have to, I mean, if you guys want to go down and and witness some of this stuff, we could coordinate a day. Just see some of the construction. It's cool to see for about, I don't know, like five minutes. And then after that, it's just rinse and repeat. And and when they're sinking the case on, that's probably the the coolest part. But the the case on sinks at like a really, really slow rate, so.
Like paint dry?
Yeah, pretty much.
That should be really fun.
It's cool to see them actually doing it, but
Oh.
after you've seen five minutes of it, you're like, all right, well, I'm good. That's my update.
Are there any questions for Mike? At this time, we'll go to the portion of the other public comment. This is the invitation for public comment. Interested audience members are invited to provide comments. This time is set aside for persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. The mayor may limit comments to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. Please complete a request to speak card prior to the meeting and turn it into the city reporter. Speakers may not yield their time to others. The written materials is included fifteen copies of all information to be distributed to the council should be submitted to the reporter or the city manager prior to the meeting. Action will not be taken at this meeting on citizen comments. Council, however, after hearing from interested citizens, make place items under new business on a future agenda. So proper notice may be given to all interested parties. If no one wishes to comment, the next agenda item will be considered. So Kelly Doherty, you're up.
I'm speaking on water. You guys' favorite topic.
Well, welcome.
First of all, I I've I'm speaking with Bill Gossett in that head office as well. And I'm going to tell you that I thought that he had emailed me. I know he did, that the the test results out into the residences were from four to a little over eight is what he had told me. And we were trying to discuss what the difference, why we were seeing this at the source and clear up to eight at the other. And he really didn't have any remarkable answers. But I just wanted to point that out, that that I believe that there was, at least according to to his office, there was there were some eight point twos, which is a little bit concerning more than than the four points, but I also think that you missed maybe the biggest question is what's causing the E. coli? What's the source of it? I know you tore the pump apart, didn't find anything. Bill and I have talked. Apparently, we were over pumping, which causes the particulates to increase. I think they were supposed to max out at six thousand gallons a minute and and we're going over that, which was sucking more surface water in. Because otherwise, right now, you're rated at a at a groundwater source. And when you get, when you pump that that extra surface water in there, that's what he was thinking, that maybe that was causing the E. coli. And I just wondered if anybody has what is causing the E. coli? Where's it coming from? Wasn't anything in the compeller? They they tore that apart, look. But it's coming from somewhere.
Well, it's interesting that it just happened. That's the interesting part to me.
How we get testing for it all the time?
Couldn't tell you that.
I know we had routine tests, but I'm not sure that we were. I mean, the last test that looked like it was clear back in twenty one, started on four twenty one. And then as soon as we brought up these issues, I noticed that the testing just exploded and then all of a sudden we had a problem. But whether that helped or where that or not, but you know. But he really was concerned about the pumping, and I know that they've talked. But if that's pulling in surface water, you know, it might affect your status as a groundwater well. And you'll have to be doing extra filtering and things like that. So I know he's working on it. It was interesting. And and personally, I think, you know, we talked about the auto-generated test and we're still arm wrestling over that. I still think people should know that you have a big E. coli in your water. I personally don't want to drink it. Come from a farm girl, I know what's in it, I know where it's coming from. You can fluorinate the tar out of it, but I think people ought to have that choice. We don't know for a fact that we're going to get that fluorinated. Very cool, I was wondering. But I think that we really need to focus on the source and find that. I don't know what the answer is. It's coming from somewhere. It's either in the surface water or it's in the groundwater. Not getting any cleaner, at least the tests aren't. I would see a new one. Maybe by cast. Where that source is coming from. But I think that's the number one question. Here's a coming twelve.
I do believe the city was working on trying to find that. I it would be hard to believe that they would.
Oh, I know they are.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you're not working on it. I'm just saying, you know, we're finding that out yet.
Is there anybody else who wish to speak at the public comment? Okay. Moving on, we'll go to action resolutions, resolution eleven dash twenty twenty two. Wholesale water rate purchased by Port of Maro for the city of
I guess, am I supposed to address this?
I would imagine if there's any input that you would like to give.
This is just our standard agreement with the port. We raised their rate starting the first of July. And so, you know, we've had a contract with them since probably ninety five, I think, and and we just raised the rate periodically to kind of keep up. And they're committed to purchasing a certain amount of water and most years anymore, they purchase more than that. So there's a stable income.
Mr. Mayor, also in your in your book, behind the resolution is the old IGA, I I printed out several ones that handed to put on your desk. So if you're curious about the change there, if you go to page two, section A two, you can see that changed from twenty five hundred, two thousand twenty five hundred language for a city manager.
So the change number on what page?
Page, and and one I handed you, the page two, section A, subsection two.
Oh, okay.
We just clarified how much pumping we would do. So I request that you pass the resolution.
For a motion, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. For a resolution eleven dash two to two, the resolution establishing the wholesale rate for water purchased by the Port of Marl from city of Ormond pursuant to intergovernmental agreement on industrial water and services. And repealing and if you might enter. And repealing all other resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict therewith. Also, I would ask that you authorize the city manager to sign that IGA. Also.
It is.
Authorized the city manager. Authorized the city manager to also sign. Sorry. Thank you.
And ready to be seconded?
I did.
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
Okay.
I have a question on this.
Yes, random question.
When we have a resolution that's spelled out like this and then the staff come up with and should it not be part of the original resolution? To have the mayor or the city manager sign the IRA or IMA or whatever it's an IGA. It's just, yeah, it's not necessarily standard language, so. So we're just asking that you give the city manager authorization to sign the IGA. I would like to see it incorporated in the resolution. That way it's not confusing to the people making the motion. That's possible.
Oh, and the blue paper, is that what you're saying?
When they print, when they present the resolution for us to approve. And we read it, and then the staff say, oh, and you need to also amend your resolution to add that having the city manager sign the IGA. It's not part of the original, but it's amended there. I would like to see the whole resolution stated with the additive have the city manager sign the IGA.
Or maybe approve it. I I see what you're saying, or maybe it'd be more beneficial to have that in the 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 resolution language.
I would like a motion.
Yeah, that might help. So and so if we read the the guided instructions as far as to approve approve the resolution. And then when they read that and then go, by the way, and this, now I think that was the question, is it my correct?
Well, that was my ask.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, man.
Yes.
Um, so the agreement actually has fought for both the port executive director and the city of Ormond city manager's sign. And in agreeing to have a new intergovernmental agreement, you're agreeing that these two entities have the power to sign it. Unless I misunderstood, agreeing to the whole resolution.
Correct, okay.
So I I mean, I don't I don't know for sure, I'm not a legal person, but if you resolve to agree to an intergovernmental agreement that has the availability for two signatures, wouldn't it naturally have fallen to those two people?
Then why? Then why mention it again?
Why?
Yeah.
That's my thing. We need clarification.
I don't know, and I don't know that I'm right. I'm just asking.
So she brought up a point that you might not have to say that. Is that what your point is?
I think that's my point, yes. Maybe it's already written down, so we wouldn't have to say.
Perhaps if I could clarify, we need to specify.
Because because the 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 city manager is acting on behalf of the council. We typically use the language that we would ask that the council approve the city manager to sign the IGA. That's typically what we do. We've not necessarily done it like council vehicles ask.
No, I think what Mr. Beagle was asking to help that when we do our resolution, that that language would be put in the on the blue page. Maybe not so much in the resolution itself.
Well, is there anything that doesn't already imply, maybe this is along with Council Prophet's statement, that that is already, that authorization is in place already?
That's on page six.
So I guess we, I'm confused now as to why we need to further clarify it in the
I I rescind my recommendation.
I would like to understand this discussion.
I think that the port does it that way. We normally do not. Because normally here, you've given me the authority to sign the documents. I mean, that's part of my job.
Sure.
And so it's never been brought up before.
Any, if I may, anytime it's ever come up before, it's been its own separate item. We agreed to make Karen the signatory for any intergovernmental agreements with that. So for example, we agreed with the with the county to do certain funding exchanges, like the building department or something, we've done. We've given her permission separately, separate from the resolution to sign it all.
And that's a money matter sometimes, too.
Sure, yeah.
And so maybe this would be too collecting fees.
Yeah.
So.
But I I don't know. It's a discussion in my mind that we're having right now about the process.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second with a second to amend what? And we I we're obviously in question. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Drago.
Yes.
Council Pearson.
Yes.
Council Lawrence.
Yes.
Council Beagle.
Prove.
Council, Council President Prophet. American.
Yes. Moving to resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty two, the fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, trying to introduce myself for potential financial gain.
Okay, you are here by the truth.
I I guess I would question, you're not receiving these funds, so how, the way I vote would indicate the potential for financial.
That you're going to get money because of this?
I may, depending on how the vote goes. So to preclude any questions, I'm going to recuse myself. We still have a court.
Well, then I would like to move.
I'm sorry, is there any information you wanted to share with this as far as the fee schedule?
I think the only thing is that under the planning.
Plan, yes.
Many developments.
Yes.
Under under community development, there's a lot of these fees that we have not done. And since we brought Carl on, we asked her to review some of those. And so she provided us with a a lot of the
stuff we should be charging for, and then some of the stuff we were charging for, we were severely under charging, so it was quite a drastic increase if we were to go to the ones that she recommended. So in under the cost for twenty twenty two, you'll see what we're asking the council to consider, and then in twenty twenty three, we're gonna add more to those, as you can see, so we slowly implement those increases in in those fees, so we're not doing it all at once.
Gotcha.
And then I think under the Water Department. We public works on the water meters and stuff, we weren't charging what the meters cost us. Now the increase has gone up, so now we're we're increasing those rates so that they will not be costing the city money. With the coupons cost.
I think also too that, you know, on on the fee schedule for the the development, the community development department, you know, we're not gonna be, we will not be waiving S D C charges anymore. So I think as a staff, we thought we didn't want to raise the fees to the developers really high all at one time that, you know, so.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So I am in the Department of City Council adopted resolution thirteen dash two zero two two. As presented, a resolution adopted the fee schedule to govern the city services and resolutions. Three dash two zero two zero and two dash two zero.
Motion second, is there any discussion at this side? Roll call, please.
Counselor Drago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty two, retaining for Lane Christianson Company. Does the staff have anything to report?
Uh, this is one of the escrow accounts that I mentioned earlier that we're needing to establish to comply with the law. Um, and then it's not in your wording, because this is your option, my recommendation was to not select all the city council's assigners, um, just so we can get this account of them going sooner. And like I said, the only checker will be cut out will be one at the very end to pay off the retained interest to the contractor at that escrow account.
So do we nominate a person or do we just make the motion to have the wording for it only to be one of those?
Yeah, we usually have, uh, let's the city manager be the first signer, and then at least one of our city councilors, so we'll point like two city counters, three assigners plus Karen. That should be sufficient, just to cover, because, you know, people want vacations or.
So how many signature you're looking for, two signatures, three signatures?
Three would be good, we have a city manager plus two city council members.
So the mayor and the council president, must anybody else wants to do it?
However, what happens in the event that one of the two selected counselors isn't available? Also, we have Karen as one signer, and then you have two options for the second signer, so if one is not available, we have to, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I misunderstood, that's that's okay, I now I understand. What'd you say, Mr. Beagle?
I can be the second.
Okay, generally around. So we got, I'm gonna amend, I'll be one, and then between the two, or we just make Mr. Beagle and.
And that person there. Therefore, that's the case, I would like to pose a motion that the Department of City Council adopted resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty two has presented a resolution establishing an interest-bearing escrow account for Lane Christianson Company for work on water system, system improvements, twenty twenty two, phase one, collective well number three, identifying Mister Mayor Kiefer and Mister, excuse me, Counselor Beagle as signators on the account. And city manager, and the city manager, yes. Thought that was implied. Not if, I just thought it was implied.
Yeah.
Um, but this is wording specific for the bank, I need to have, so that's happy to clarify for that reason.
And Jen, you got Mr. Beagle seconded.
Oh, no, I didn't, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
So Drago.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce. Yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Beagle.
Approve.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty two, retainage for premier excavation.
One more escrow account, one more of the contractors.
Same same idea?
Yes.
So we'll just keep the just the same and same.
Therefore, I so moved that the Department of City Council adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty two has presented a resolution establishing an interest-bearing escrow account for premier excavation, Inc., for work on Laurel Lane and Luke Road improvements, twenty twenty one, identifying city manager Karen Pettigrew, Mayor Kiefer and Counselor Beagle as the signators on the account.
Second. Okay, we got a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Drago.
Yes.
Counselor Pearson. Yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Beagle.
Approve.
Council President Profit. Yes. Mayor Kiefer.
Yes. Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty two, retainage for R and G excavation.
My last one, same principle. Different contractor.
Mister Mayor, I rule that the Department of City Council adopted resolution sixteen twenty twenty two as presented. Resolution established an interest-bearing escrow account for R and G excavation incorporated for work on wastewater system improvements twenty twenty two with Karen Pettigrew, Paul Kiefer, and myself as signatories.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Drago.
Yes.
Counselor Pearson. Yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Beagle.
Approve.
Council President Profit. Yes. And Mayor Kiefer.
Yes. Moving to L O C yearly survey.
Okay.
Guess that would be league of cities.
Yes. I sent you out in June. The papers from the L O C that all of the it's like, I don't know, maybe seven or eight pages. And I was hoping, oh, eleven pages, so I was hoping you'd have time to look at them before we needed to fill out the questionnaire. Don't forget to ask them if they want to go to the. So. So anyway, on the questionnaire, did we put the questionnaire in your package?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So let's start at the very first one. It says, because if you had read the eleven page thing, you would know something about the questions on here. I have written down something by a lot of them that I thought were pertinent to us. The first one says, and it's a page that looks like this.
May I ask where that's located in the binder, please? Prearranged presentation. Thank you.
What was interesting to me, to be honest about this, if you had 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 time to look at it. L O C starts off with we're going to support this legislation. So I'm almost curious why they bother to have us go through this. But we'll, we, because they really like to know what the individual cities say, but it always interests me when they already say that they are gonna support it, so. Full funding and alignment for the state land use initiatives, and it says let's say background and executive orders have been significantly changed to the state land use planning process, including increasing burdens for local government, while the L O C shares state policy goals. These updates have resulted in extensive continuous and sometimes conflicting or making efforts that are not supported by adequate state funding, cities simply do not have the staff capacity or resources needed to implement current requirements, existing planning dates, updates should be streamlined to enable simpler, less costly invitations, and new proposals should be aligned with existing requirements. So I think we should put a question by that one as maybe for a yes, if we when we get down to the others. Local funding to address homelessness, they're wanting to have us, you know, them to the state to help us fund homeless, you know, shelters and things like that, and the thing about this is mostly they are understanding that cities cannot take on these kind of duties without some funding from the state. Infrastructure funding to support the needed housing. I wrote down statewide funds to address infrastructure costs. So, you know, they're thinking that, like, so many towns can't afford the infrastructure to do new housing, you know, I mean, like well, you you can just think of a lot of smaller communities that maybe if they had the infrastructure, they could have more housing. Community resilience and wildfire planning, I think that that's I we're, I don't think we're probably so, we don't have wildfire as close to us as like you say Pepper would have or something. But and I'm gonna go through these pretty quickly, protecting public employees and officials to put, and I wrote down to protect your address and personal contact information from people harassing you, and that's what this would be, and they're gonna support that, is that they're wanting to make rules that you cannot give out, like your private addresses and stuff, that you can't have people come and lobby or pick it in front of your house, that if they wanna come and pick it on your main street or something, that's one thing, but they cannot individually. So I would think that that's probably a yes in my book, but return to work, so this is a first thing, and first employees have been able to come back to work. And what kind of, yes, but now there, this this one would return to work without pension. And and you can't prove a hardship or workforce security. Scarcity, I mean, see, because before, it's like, I could say, well, I can't find a chief of police, so I'm gonna hire him back. Well, if if I can't say that I I gotta pay Pers and all of his benefits, because before it was a good deal to hire people back again and not pay those benefits, but they're not gonna allow that.
So who doesn't wanna do that, the city of Oregon?
Yeah.
As for all Pers?
I suppose.
Or is that for city employees?
No, that's Pers.
Well, they're playing with the firecracker there.
Oh, this is this will get a unanimous vote in a lot of places, so and let me see if I could, I see, that was number six on my question there here, so. Yeah, so go on page three of your big thing, and it'll tell you what it means for fifty one. Attorney client privileges, not just twenty five years, but indefinitely. Some of these, what they're saying is some of the things that we can do away with saving that that we need to have that attorney client privilege for longer than twenty five years. Because people, you know, look at, look at all your congressmen now, I mean, they're in their eighties, they've been more than twenty five years. Certainly, you know, so they may have done something thirty years ago. So address measure one ten shortcoming. And I'm sure the chief has an opinion about that. And anybody that's a law enforcement would, because that's the one that lowered that. Okay, you explain it.
I'll, if it dropped the criminalization on controlled substances down to a violation as compared to crime, so in addition to that, the the shortcomings are, the state was thinking they were gonna get some revenue by issuing citations. Um, and then these people appear in court and pay their citation, but if they go into rehab, then the fine is, they don't have to pay the fine. There's no way to enforce them going to rehab, so what they found is they're not getting the money they thought they were gonna get. Okay.
And more people are on drugs, so anyway. We probably, I thought maybe that was a yes for Boardman. Building decarbonization, efficiency and modernization. And this one is about homes and buildings use about half the energy that's in 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 anywhere. So they say that if you're, they're wanting to, if they want to make you retrofit a building, they've gotta help fund it. You know, because they can force the, you know, the building codes are changing all the time to make you build more energy efficient, but if they're gonna make you start retrofitting, like saying that we all have to have a solar panel on our house, then somebody has to help us pay for that. So continuing investment, okay, then the next number ten is continue investment in renewable energy. Number eleven is investment in community climate planning resources, number twelve is adequate funding for state climate initiatives. Property tax reform. It's number thirteen, and it says change five and fifty. And they wanna change the way they value your property, and so that's gonna be hot, that's gonna be a big deal in the legislature. I don't know if we wanna think if it's one of our high priorities, but it will be a big deal, because revaluing your property is, you know, the lodging tax flexibility, they're wanting to take your lodging tax. Right now, you you have to spend seventy percent of your logic tax on promotion of tourism and stuff, and they're wanting to change some of that so that you can, you can use more of that money or in different ways, you know, I think that like here, you know, we could, you know, probably say that if we fix the road to the marina or somewhere, that that would be helping with tourism, but they're wanting us, they're wanting to use that it make it so it's more flexible, and that would be probably a really good thing for us, because we have plenty of streets that we could, I think, say that we could use the paving on. Number fifteen, economic development incentives, co-sponsored and with the community development committee, and this, if you looked at your P E P R, I think number three. I think number three. Anyway, number 15 is going to be a yes. Because it's about the enterprise zone and the long term enterprise zone. And and so I think that all of us hopefully would agree that those have been very beneficial to our area and we would not want them to because enterprise zones are supposed to go away in 25 and the SIP is supposed to go away in 26. But I think, I think there was, there's going to be a big movement from all the communities that have an enterprise zone, whether the LOC, you know, promotes it or not, but marijuana tax, that doesn't apply to us. Alcohol revenue, change the way that taxes on beer and wine are. They say that we were like the lowest or the second lowest in the taxing of beer and wine. So they want to raise the tax and distribute it a little bit differently. Digital equity and inclusion. I didn't write anything down about that. Resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure and planning. I think that's probably, oh, that word should have been resilient. But anyway, I think that's important to our area. You know, everybody's wanting and there's, and and what you want is most all these are about getting funding from the state. I mean, this is about if you want us to do these things, you send us some money to do it. Cybersecurity and privacy. You know, that's becoming a real worry when when most of the kids know how now to to get into lots of stuff they shouldn't.
It's a bigger thing. I mean, we're having it even in Florida.
Yes.
Yes, kids are logging into things they're not supposed to love and how they do that.
No, I think I think that's a yes for statewide things. Transportation safety enhancement. Oh, this is the one about they want to, they want to put fixed cameras on your lights. The good thing is we have no lights. So I don't know if that's going to help or not. But like in Portland, you know, or like if you're speeding or run a stop sign, the camera takes your picture and then they know where to go.
There are some of that. Uplights of areas.
Yes. And so, but I don't think here it's probably, you know, I probably would, if I only had five votes, I probably would put one on that one because.
Well, you only get five?
Yeah.
They only want five?
Yeah.
Your top five. This is for the lobbyists, correct?
Yes. Road user fees. Okay, this is another one that's going to be pretty controversial because they've tried it before and it's always got a conversation. Vehicle miles traveled structures. This is the, this is the thing people are saying that now well, the state's collecting less gas tax, we're getting better fuel mileage in our cars if we're having more electric cars people are riding bikes and whatever. So now they want to charge you vehicle miles traveled. And the problem with that for the last, I don't know how many years is how they're going to tell how many miles I drive. Are you going to make me put us a thing in my car? And my privacy and you know, you see the advertisement from the insurance companies saying, you know, that if you let them do this, that they can they'll make you.
Right now. Insurance companies already put a digital monitor in your car. If you would let them to lower your interest rate.
Yeah.
Or not interest rate, insurance rate.
So I don't know whether we want to vote for that one, but it's going to be a big topic.
It it's interesting. They don't even think about, I mean, coming from Florida, the idea of tolls.
Oh, yes.
I mean, everybody pays whether you have an electric car or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we could, I think we could discuss about the bridge over to Washington down in Fort Worth. Why that's so hard to figure out.
Two toll bridges over those bridges across the river.
Absolutely.
Either one of them for safety, not because of cost.
Okay, the next one on here is new mobility services. And this is there, they want to try to figure out how to regulate things like Uber and DoorDash and that kind of stuff. So. Funding for recovery of abandoned recreation vehicles. But but it is, it is exactly, exactly what we went through here.
All the bonfire.
That and particularly in the larger.
Yeah, you just told it. Find somebody who wants to.
Well, but they, but what what in the wording here, they were talking about people abandoning homeless people buying an old camper or something and then just walking off. And then the city has to come along and tow it away and take care of it. And that in big communities, that's getting to be more of a problem for sure. And I thought, well, hey, we had that. So, okay. Water rate, water utility rates and fund assistance. And I just wrote only if they funded it by state or federal money. I mean, place-based water resource planning program support. And this is another one that if somebody wants to send you money, that's we could probably use that, but you can't make me start paying for all this. 28, the last one, infrastructure finance and resilience. And I wrote yes on that.
What fire were you looking at? Which fire were you looking at?
Oh, I didn't even remember. I just thought to.
Oh.
See, I've got.
Yeah. 27 could be something that could address some of the issues that we're facing.
I like 13.
Is 13 the one that moved? Yes.
On on any of the suggestions, for instance, the property tax reform or alcohol revenue. Do they identify how they anticipate distributing those funds into what categories or is it just open ended?
For what actions do they tend to take? I think if it was the league of cities. Yeah, their their lobbyists, they're going to be lobbying for a lot of this that would be positive for for the cities. So if the if the state goes in that direction, they're going to lobby it to where that it would be positive for the state, for the cities. That would be usually how they're believed for in cities lobbyists will work.
Well, and I think I probably shouldn't say this, but when I, because I come from private industry and business, not everything that the league is sponsors is good for business. I mean, just because they say I'm going to support that doesn't make me automatically say yes.
Correct. It may not be the best. It might be good for a big city, but it may not be the best for a smaller community.
Insists on the property tax, the proper tax system is broken and need a repair due to constitutional provisions of measure five of 50 that were adopted by voters in the 1990s. Current system is inadequate to property owners and jurisdictions alike is often inadequate to allow jurisdictions to ride critical services, remove removes meaningful local choice and is incomprehensible to most taxpayers. And you know, if you've ever tried to figure out compression, compression, when they talk about that it's and that you can't understand it for the local taxpayer, that is really true. Compression is really difficult. Local government and schools rely heavily on property taxes revenue to pay for services and capital expenses with federal pandemic aided to cities coming to an end and inflation looming. Cities are concerned that their top revenue source will not allow residents to adequately fund the services they that they demand. Therefore, the LOC will take a leadership role in pursuing efforts to draft and advocate for both comprehensive and incremental property tax reform options packages, including forming coalitions with other interested parties. The LOC will remain flexible to support all legislation that intrudes the system, but will in the short term focus on incremental changes that will allow for foundation on which to build for broader revenues going forward. The LOC overall focuses focus will be on a property tax package that include, but may may not be limited to these elements. Oh, gosh, and I'm not done. There's three more paragraphs. Oh, but I've got one underlined. It says new property tax has taxable value determined based on city average of maximum access value to market value as opposed to capital wide average. I don't know what that means.
Also, if the county, like if you lived in Multnomah County, for example, and you were in Gresham versus Lake Oswego, there would be a huge difference in your tax obligation, which is spread out over all of Multnomah.
Well, and even here as a Realtor, what we get from the county, your real market value is typically much lower than the actual market value. And it just brings to mind the issues that we had recently with the school bond not passing and people concerned with their current taxes being too high. And my concern with this reform idea is if the city wants to bring those or the city and county want to bring those values up, it's going to be harder on the citizens to pay those taxes that they already feel pitched. So I'm not seeing a positive in that suggestion, but I may not understand it all the way either.
No, I see. This is what I say about just because they think it's a hot idea.
Yeah. Well, in statewide, there's a lot of things to deal with, but we have a permanent city tax rate which was set and established back in the 90s. And the formula they use to set that, we were lucky to get ours at 4.211. But there are some cities that there's this, their permanent tax rate is like 1.02. And they're like, we, we have no money. We can't function. And it's a permanent tax rate. You can't change it. So that's another issue that we're trying to address with this tax reform. There's just, there's a lot. And that's why I say, you know, the whole thing is just broken. And with the compression, if people understood the compression, those that max out in compression, people guess on every single additional tax because they're not going to be paying more. They they've maxed out, they're capped. But you could live two blocks down and you don't cover for that compression and you do have to pay for that. So there's a lot of different variables.
Sometimes the system knows better than the system do. You think the system you know is better than the system you don't know.
I think it proves that there's room for reform on multiple levels and perhaps the revaluation on some others.
So shall I just mark five and send it in? Or do we want to talk? We, this needs to be in before our next city council meeting.
I would like number eight for sure. I'll listen as a priority.
Okay, yes.
I'd like a might have been consensus around number 13. I don't know. 13, 14, 15, and 21 perhaps.
Yes. Yeah. That's the ones I have. Yes.
So that leaves one more.
And and I suppose this kind of pits the small communities against the large communities. You know what I'm saying?
But we should have an equal voice.
Yes. Okay, then I'm I'll mark these and send it in to them.
This is our voice. Whether it's small, whether. The big, so when you go to the mayor's conference, you get to see who has the big, the big hammer. It gets a lot done. It is not us. We're left on our own to try to figure out how we're going to survive.
I would also like to quickly mention that I I placed some agendas for the lead of Oregon cities annual training and the mayor won't be able to attend, but anybody would like to attend one. You know, because registration opens tomorrow and it fills up quickly.
And we think that we need to do everything that we have.
Yeah. So.
We don't confirm right now. Again, I'll write my name on this.
Thank you. It opens up tomorrow though, is why we're really asking you tonight. And it's in Ben. And and so if, and it's really hard to get, if we call first thing in the morning, maybe we would be lucky and get you a room at the at the River House. And the thing about the River House, to be honest, is you have to run across the four lanes of traffic to get to the convention center on the other side. Other than it's just a nice place to stay, it's almost as easy to stay at the hotel across the road, get in your car and drive over.
Well, they don't even, they took that crosswalk out. So you've got to go under the walk path. You can't, there's no crosswalk there anymore.
Oh, so I don't have to run?
So Karen Landfroder.
So anyway, if you want to go or thinking about going, I think we can only make three reservations without confirming or something. I mean, we can't stack the deck.
So we have a couple of confirmations down here waiting to do.
So, okay.
Well, she told me to sign the paper instead of, so we got two sides and it said right here.
Okay, so two.
Just take whatever they ought to take.
Who said I can take?
Oh, I'm talking to Greg.
So so two.
We have to see how this is a problem.
So two.
Retired.
I know, I know.
Let's let's get on that.
I'm tentative. Can I get back to you in the morning?
Okay, yes.
Arrangements to see if that'll work.
They're really nice to go to. I I I mean, you part of it is just the interaction with the other people. But I I haven't seen the classes that they're offering this time, but usually there's some really good.
So if you're going.
They've done some nice tours as well. And so like, I've seen some pretty magnificent things happen.
Yes, if you go that day ahead of time.
On Wednesday or Thursday.
Yes, Wednesday, I think, then. And the the tours are great. I mean, you you learn a lot about how other people do things. So.
Is there anything else you'd like to share about the LOC you're observing?
No, I'm done with that.
Yeah. Go ahead. Take a bite. We're going to recess for five minutes. All right, at this time, we're going to enter into executive session 192.6602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. The city of Boardman will hold an executive session meeting for the permissible reason or reason stated below under ORS 192.6602. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session as permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to HB 2560. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session, at the end of the executive session. We will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room in person and open the public virtual Zoom meeting link again. So at this time, I'm gonna pause the meeting as we go into executive session. Okay, we'll resume our city council meeting. Of July twel- twelve point twenty-two. We got any comments?
Is this council comment period or?
I don't know, I, I mean, for the report, for what we. From our executive session.
What is the, what is the policy or process at this point if we? Open up that discussion? Is that something we do now, or how does that?
Does it need to go on an agenda later?
We don't know what you're talking about, so I don't know what you're gonna ask either.
Typically, when we come out of executive session, we seem to say something like, there were no decisions made.
Do we have a decision that we wanna make, or do we not have a decision we wanna make? I don't think that we came to a conclusion.
Well, we're not allowed to come to a conclusion.
Oh, okay, that would be what we wanna do right now, right? So basically, the motion would be, we would make a motion that would decide what way we wanna go. As far as the direction that we went in there for. Okay, so I guess the direction that I'm thinking of, are we, are we gonna go with Chief Stoco as? The next city manager, I guess that was the question, or the purpose of going in there? Is that in my?
But I thought that's why we went in there, discussed that.
Okay, so are we at a point based on? Agenda items and conducting a public meeting, can we have a discussion at this point?
Can we have a public discussion?
What are you wanting to discuss? The discussion, I, I do believe.
To proceed.
So we were to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. We went in there and we considered the employment. So when we come back out here, what is our next step?
You can decide how you would like to proceed. Or you can not make a decision. And in table for another time. Or you can have a discussion. Mr. Mayor, can I interject? I would like to make a motion that the offer the position, city manager. Out to the public so that they themselves feel that they have a portion. Of our selection process and go through the whole process of hiring. The best candidate for city manager.
Do you mean for the public to hire this?
No, no, so that they are involved in the process of our selecting the city manager.
May I interject or provide some discussion? Karen sent us all an email with the guide to recruiting a city administrator that we all received, and upon that, I did some extra research. I contacted the League of Oregon Cities as well as CSI, the C I S, thank you. C I S Oregon for some instruction as to what is the formal process and procedure? To ensure that we are following the proper steps and to cover our bases, so. At that point, I've received quite a bit of really helpful information in addition to the guide that Karen sent, and I think we have an opportunity here where. Perhaps we need to discuss. A process for replacing the city manager. And we have a few different options, we have a set of tools that I have received already for our full recruitment, whether it be internal and external. With an entire process, application process, and we would need to put together a committee to determine how that looks. And or if we're at the pleasure of the city council to move forward with the current. Assistant city manager to move that person into the city manager position, I still believe need a job description. And to, we need to conduct an interview, et cetera, following the information that I've received. Does that make sense? At the end of the day, I think that there's an opportunity for us to. Decide upon the process, which, which way we wanna go and move forward there.
Which I think we can all agree is we are aiming for transparency. Inside of our process in accuracy. So, but. To be akin with Leslie, you know, forming a committee and getting the job outline would be the, the great foundation of, of those two things.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to share some of this information with the council so that you all can review it and then we can determine possibly how. To form a committee, who would be on that committee and perhaps lean on. The expert advice of Sharon Harris, perhaps, and or other people. To clearly identify what that hiring process should look like and or any other input.
I, I just wanna go out and say that if I had to vote for a city manager, I'd vote for Rick Stoco right now. However, with that being said. We have not offered or applied, put out there that we are need a city manager. I'm looking at my educational background on how hiring and firing and hiring processes are done. And I don't think I needed Joe Blow from another country or a city to come into Boardman. However, I do believe that we need to look. Locally. To see if there's candidates that wish to do it. And then we have, we have published that we need a city manager. I don't believe that we need to go to other cities. I think we give our local communities and what's local is what's local. And I think that we can decide what's local. And then we go through the process of that transparency of saying. Okay, cuz we, we want, we want the best person not to say that you're not the best person. I, I wanted to make sure that. It's not a handpicked job, which, you know, but at the same time, I, I. Then we get our community buy-in, okay, and that's, that's the direction that I would like to see, see happen. If I was to vote for Chief Stoco, you'd get my vote, I'd go for that right now, but I, I think we've not been the most transparent on. The direction that we're going, if that makes sense.
I guess I'd like to comment. What do you think we've been doing for the last six months? If, if, I don't know where, where this got to where we get to here. You know, we, we, we hired Proffman, he did the survey, got people to come in. I thought we all decided that none of them would be qualified. Rick and I have spent a ton of time together. I mean, I cannot tell you how much time and email and effort we have put into this. Now, if you hadn't have given us some indication that this is the way we were going and he was gonna be the assistant city manager. I can't believe that I dreamed that up all by myself. That all of a sudden, we're having a conversation. That, and I don't know how Rick feels about this, but it seems to me like that. How much more time do you want to do this? I mean, you know, how many more ads, how many, if, if you've got five friends that aren't happy because they didn't get chosen to be interviewed? Then. Okay, I guess you can start over again. But the training people to take this job is not an overnight process. When I came, I came to a computer with nothing on it and no files. Now, I could leave it that way, but I really can't understand. What the benefit is going to be. If you think you're gonna do this by the fifteenth of August. Do you think you're gonna do it by November first? You guys need to really have some clear thoughts about what, how long this process takes. What's been put in it before and how we imagined. That Rick was going to be the assistant city manager. Because he can go back, I'm assuming, and be really happy being the chief police. He likes that job, he's comfortable with that job. I can go back to. Not training Rick to be an assistant city manager. I don't know. I think you guys, I mean, and I don't care what you decide, I guess, well, I do, but. You need to really think about your timing on this.
I would like to interject first, we're back in public session, did this recorder need to be here for that?
Oh, no, are you recording, so?
Without a doubt, this is nothing personal, I think that this is just a matter of following policy and procedure that. That is our responsibility and our responsibility is to hire a city manager. And the process that we follow with Proffman was to hire an assistant city manager with the understanding. Or the potential that they would move up into that position when, when you were through. However, based on the information that I've received. I just think it's in the best interest of the council and of the city to follow the procedures. That may or may not be available to us at the city now and that we have an opportunity to follow the process.
So how long do you think your process is gonna take, I would like?
Go ahead.
But I, I don't know, I'm not trying to interrupt, I was just trying to find the right time to speak.
Thanks, I think everyone around me. Is feeling hyper aware of the importance of procedure. And the importance of process. And I am comfortable as well to say. All the times that I can think of Rick offering me advice, information. And, and it being what I needed to hear and helping me grow and learn, and I have no negative. Commentations of his character or his work ethic. But I think what I'm hearing is that with our level. Being the level where we need to be attentive to who the city is hiring for the next manager, because that is, that is our. Our area of mindfulness that they. People around me, myself, are wanting to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a place where the city. Or the council is getting accused of being. Unethical, for a lack of better words.
And are not following appropriate rules, cuz there are some things in regards to. How people are hired that we are obligated to follow.
Now, yes, yes, the, the last part I was gonna say is, you know, you, you pose a question like, well, how long do you think? I personally can't answer that, I don't have hands-on experience, but I know the timeline of when, you know, the city has been sitting down with us to check in and. You, it feels like we have been moving at the pace that we all talked about. It felt like, you know, right about when we had a talk. With our last talk was about where it needed to be, that our mindfulness needed to be, what are we going to decide? And I know that it has been stated in the past what the expectation for a new or when the expectation for a new city manager is. And I think all of us are trying to meet that expectation in the most professional way that we can. So the public, citizens, our community, which we are all of us, not just this, but we're all trying to represent the best that we can. Is just feeling apart and aware of the process.
So you're expecting him to apply for this position?
I don't think.
Is there some, is there, wouldn't that be a bad thing?
I just wanna know what you, I mean, I wanna know if you think that he should apply.
Yes, ma'am, I think if, if he was to move into the position that all of us have seen him function in, and if he wanted to be a part of that conversation. And I respect, we think you could be wise with him to apply. With what it sounds like the council is considering that we would like to do. I think, can I speak? Just, so I think there's a perception, I know there's a perception, that. That there is underhandedness in the way that this is going now. From, from up in the public. And my. Goal there is to get the right person for the job. It's also my goal to protect our police department and our city. Think that if we go about it tonight and just say, we think that Rick should be in there, that that's gonna hurt the city and it's gonna hurt. The perception of his position, of position.
Their selected process.
Correct. I don't know what the right thing is to do, I just know that we're not doing things right now. In perception.
So are you forming a committee?
Me personally, I think the council, I mean, I think the council needs to. I think we need to do more discussion on, I, we need to learn what, what Leslie's learning. Obviously, we didn't do our due diligence as counselors to look into, you know, how the process is supposed to.
A recommendation from Sharon Harris would be to add this to our agenda, our next agenda as soon as possible. So that we have the opportunity to discuss various scenarios, where, and I'm gonna just refer to her email with some direction. At a city council meeting, decide on a process, full recruitment or an internal recruitment, either way, the city council needs to decide on a clean job description. And this is the tool to hold an employee accountable, again, as if you're running any other business. Karen, you always say, we run the city like a business, so that falls in line with that. And then if doing a full recruitment, we would put together a selection committee, this group would review and score the application materials. She's provided a whole gamut of materials and processes to make that happen. If doing an internal recruitment, the city council should still decide how to interview an internal candidate. And make sure that any internal candidate can apply to post the position internally so that all employees are given the same opportunity. So there's some other legal rules that we wanna be careful that we're following. How we would process interviews and so on, so. We would put together perhaps a committee, we would have a screening tool, we would have an application for vets. A recruitment procedure with scoring tool, job announcements, interview processes, et cetera. And we would need to have a committee. And the application review process, et cetera, so there's a lot of things to consider if, again. If we want to pursue that, we have an opportunity and tools for a full recruitment internally and externally. Or if it is at the pleasure of the council to just move forward with our current assistant city manager and move into. Whole city manager position. I think it is in our best interest to have at the very minimum a job description and an application. And an interview process, based on the information that I have. Now, I think that's something that we can all look into further and then discussing that perhaps is the best. Now, I think that's something that we can all look into further and then discuss that perhaps is the best. Choice after everyone has an opportunity to review the same information that I've been to them, perhaps.
Well, we were talking about how long it's gonna take, and I was thinking. Chief Soco has shown interest that he wants to be our next city manager. Been training for seven plus months, including the months that he has worked here, been involved with the city. I like the idea of following a procedure of. A meet and greet, hey, this is what we're doing. I like that idea of going out and sharing with the public with this. What harm is it gonna be doing if we offered it for whatever the law says we have to announce for a city manager? We do that and we take the candidate and then we have a, a panel or we have individuals that talk to them and. Let him speak to our community, the direction and the ideas that he has for. The community that he loves and. And that's where, that's all I have to say.
To figure back on what you're saying. I've known the chief since he was hired, and, and he can't find a better city official. That's more in tune to what the direction the city of Borden should go. He's a hundred percent behind, he lives in the city of Borden. Anything that's Borden, and he's got his finger on, he's got a pulse, he's feeling the pulse and. I believe that he would be a good fit, but. As it's been brought up, the process that we followed was not transparent for the public. And they felt that it didn't matter what the public felt because Karen said, this is who I'm gonna hire. This is who's gonna replace him. And they didn't feel that they had an input, which is why I. Alright, I, I agree with you. I think that the chief would be. The best candidate that we have available to us now.
So it's, this is something that we need to put on an agenda, a future agenda so that we can. Notice to the public that this is a discussion item and discuss it further at another time.
So the only, the only comment I have about this. Is timing. So when I read that article in Lake Borden Cities, they said you needed to start a year in advance. So I think we're behind the eight ball, if you will. With our timing.
We don't have a year.
We don't have a year. So I don't know that we can wait until August's meeting to have our next meeting, put this on the agenda. I think we're going to have to meet more frequently to resolve those things that we think would be valuable to this process. In order to move as swiftly as possible. In whatever direction the council decides to go, we're all presented with the same information.
Well, I, I tend to disagree with you on the timing. The public was aware of the process or the selection agenda. They were aware that the chief wants. The assistant. So there is, there is that time, the six months or seven months.
I, I think we're talking about different things, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm saying that the article I read in Lake Borden City said that when you go out to hire a city manager. You need to start about a year before you need to have the position filled. And you need, and it had some very specific steps that you would follow over the course of that year. And what I mean by being behind the eight ball is we have done none of those steps up to this point.
Did not one of the steps include interviewing candidates?
It did, but we did that in December.
That we've done. So can't say we haven't done any of it.
But we didn't hire any of those candidates, Mr. Mayor. So then, and that wasn't even for a job that we had the right to make a decision on.
So it would be wise for us to find out whether we could meet next as soon as.
For what purpose?
To speak further in a length on the plan that we would like to prepare.
And to look at the information that Leslie's gathered. To determine what is our best course of action.
What the process is, what the various scenarios are.
What the, what the legal mandates are and how to proceed and how to proceed.
We're already way behind that. So we, we got perception issues that we have to do, and if we're gonna do legal mandates, that's a whole, that's gonna be into the next year.
Not necessarily. We, I have a stack of tools, and then if we have Ms. Harris's guidance and we have potentially. We can, there's some very, various scenarios again that we can follow and determine what would be best. To meet all of the needs, timing, et cetera. I would like to share the, this information with everyone so that you can review it and determine what's going on. And perhaps Ms. Harris has said to please contact her with questions at any time, perhaps we can get her on a call. I don't know what options we have, but I, I just really think we have an opportunity here to. To do this well and to follow process that.
Well, we're at a crossroad right here, because if I'm sitting in that chair right there, I already know what I'm gonna say to the council. I'm gonna keep my job and you guys can go and find your new city manager. That, that's, whether that's the right. That's where, that's how I would be feeling. And. If I was also sitting there, I'd probably feel like, man, I've been led on a goose chase and. Whether it's right or wrong, I, I just think that if we diddle-dabble around. We're not gonna have a candidate anymore. And January is gonna come and we're not gonna have a city manager anymore. And then we're gonna be really stuck. And I'm thinking. We got, I think the biggest issue we have is perception issue. That's where I think we could probably fix this. If Chief Soco is the man that we want to be, then we go and figure it out. How do we make the public know that this is the best person for our job, for our city? That, that's where I was thinking.
Well, I think a couple of things that will help with perception is we actually have a process that we go through to hire. And if we don't do a process, if we don't do a process, we are only going to be stuck with those perception issues.
Well, we're not gonna have a city manager, we're not gonna have an Assistant City Manager after tonight.
Well, are you suggesting that we are not in a position to?
I'm not saying we're not following the rules. What I'm saying is we got a tough decision to make. Because after tonight, you're not gonna have a city manager. Candidate.
It's not our role to decide whether or not there's an Assistant City Manager tomorrow. That is Karen's role.
No, I'm saying right now, he won't be a candidate for your city manager. He's gonna say, here's your shirt back.
This to fall unkindly, but that cannot be our primary concern tonight. If our, if we're not prepared to offer a job. We would like to go through a process to do the determination to make sure that we are ethical in our role. As hirers for a position, then we cannot worry about whether or not someone is willing to stay. And become that person and make it and fill out an application and apply for the job.
Then that should have been decided in February by us.
We were not made aware, the data has changed. We were not aware of the process and now we have learned new things, just like we are learning every day. How to do this better.
Well, it was my understanding that in June or July, we would take a look at this and then we'd go through a process of presenting it to the public. That was my understanding. I, I didn't think in June or July that we'd say, here you go, this is your job.
I'm sorry, I'm not following. Isn't that what we're saying, that at this point we were given the opportunity to make a decision? Whether or not we were gonna proceed with that and or put out an application for a new city manager.
Correct, but now I'm hearing that we're just gonna take six months. And that's fine.
I just was saying that we have a very limited window, like Karen was saying, okay, you're meeting in August to decide the process. And then you're meeting in December to see if you have any applicants and then it's January and she's gone and we don't have anybody. And I think that what I'm saying to you, when I say that you're, we're in a position where that we cannot afford to squander our months. We maybe need to meet to go over the process sooner than the next council meeting in August, which I think is August 2nd. That's what I was trying to say.
I get you. Copy that.
Mr. Mayor, saw a hand in the city official's side and I just wanted to give an opportunity if there was still a hand.
I think I would just like to say that if you didn't think you followed a process, I think you're mistaken. Because I met with each, every one of you before I even considered this and had a discussion. If you weren't interested in me moving forward in the process, tell me then. We met, you guys met in a meeting and said, let's move forward in that process. Did you recall doing that?
Are you referring to the meeting?
In January, before January, before I accepted the position. And then the goal was to train under the city manager for a year. At six months, we would have an evaluation to determine if I would continue to move forward in that process. That was my understanding. It appears that that's changing, which is fine. You guys decide what you wanna do.
I don't, I don't know that it's changing, Rick. I think that. That the understanding isn't throughout the whole council. I don't know if the whole council understood what, what you're, that at six months we decide whether you go forward and continue training. I think that the council was under the impression that at six months we were deciding if you were going to be the city manager. Just to be clear, that's what, that's my understanding from, from conversation.
That was my understanding as well.
Right.
So, and, and, and so I respect your decision, whatever you need to do. I would tell you that it's not uncommon for a chief of police to become a city manager. It's happened in several cities around the state. So you might do your homework.
I don't, I don't think that that's a concern. I, the process, we, if we're gonna.
It's an internal process. But I, I can save you a lot of time. You might wanna start looking for a city manager. I don't know that, I was under the impression that this was gonna be this difficult. I thought I was doing the right thing, because I love this community and I was stepping up when we didn't have somebody willing to take that position. I get where you're coming from. I understand the perception. I don't think we hid anything from anybody. That's what I'm upset about, that the thought that we, we hid this from the community. I, I've not talked to anybody in the community who feels that. That was the case. I personally have. You guys do what you gotta do. I will support the city in its endeavors and we'll see where it comes down. I'm not leaving my employment with the city board. I will continue to do what I need to do. If we need to be the assistant manager, that's fine. And then we decide what process you guys are gonna follow.
Do you have a problem with, my problem's not the right word. Do you think it's appropriate that if we decided or made a decision to go forward with you as city manager? That it would be. Important for, to have a meet and greet and let the.
I have no, no conflict with that. No, I have no conflict with that. I mean. That's how I got here as a chief. I mean, I went through a process and, and, and so I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about that process. If you're looking for somebody that has more background in planning and. All that other stuff, then you're probably gonna find somebody with more experience than I, and that's fine. I'm committed to the city of Borden. I have no problems danger to the police. If in the end you decide you want to be the city manager, what will move forward? My, my frustration again is the fact that it's being portrayed that it was done underhandedly or, or whatever, because I don't see that. I, I don't know.
And maybe, maybe it's. The. The idea of the first round where people shared their concerns and then, you know, regardless of how that went. So.
I think, I think your answer is, you, you have some more discussion to have. And come up with.
I'd like to do it in a week.
I would like to as well.
Can, can we, how, how long do we have to have it on the agenda before we meet again?
Twenty-four hours?
Yeah. Well, go ahead. Isn't it like if it's an emergency meeting?
You can call it an emergency meeting, but does this constitute an emergency?
I don't know. I think we have to do seven days though, but that's my guy. That's what I was thinking, but, but I don't know.
But if we, my challenge would be. How do I say it? My challenge to the council would be the direct, we need to come up with a direction within. Up at seven days by our next time we have, we have a clear direction of where we wanna go. Cause I don't think it's, I don't think we're on a page to be unanimous on where we wanna go right now. Maybe there's a lot of emotion. I know I have a lot of emotion and. I think a week to be able to come together again and make a motion and decide where we wanna go.
It's definitely next Tuesday, to be the nineteenth. If I was to try to just, and then change specifically for all of us.
And could I, and could I? Are we coming back in a week to look at the information that's together? Are we just coming back to redo this meeting?
I would, I would prefer ideas of what we wanna do. I, I'm not saying that this has to be that way. But I'm just saying, we either make a motion of how we're gonna hire a city manager or we're gonna hire. Hire or go with the direction of having assistants, assistant city manager to be the next. I think those two questions need to be answered. And I, I think sooner than later. As far as I'm concerned.
So do you have a job description in your mind? I know, I, I wanted to know if they thought they had one. Cause they've not asked me for a job description for the city manager, so I didn't know if Sharon was gonna send you one.
I do not have a job description. I do not have a job description. I think that is. Probably somewhere that you have. I do not have one.
Yeah. No, and I can send the packet that we got when we first became councillors.
Is this everybody's? Is this our charter?
The job description.
Oh, that, that, yeah, I do not have a copy of the job description. So I'm not thinking of a job description. I'm thinking on, my idea is. We're either gonna go with Chief Soco and go that route, or we're gonna come up with a whole different idea. I think those are two.
Why does it have to be the baby or that one? Why can't it be that we go through a process, Chief Soco may still be interested in the job applies for the position? And we make the determination based on the applicants, the interviews, the process. She might come out, he might come out at the top.
Yeah, and so that's.
I always thought that, I thought you were doing one or the other.
Well, that's kind of the process for that would be a motion, say this, wait, we're going. You know what I'm saying?
Would it be appropriate then to share all the information that I just learned from Sharon? And perhaps any of you can speak up to her directly and ask questions to better understand the materials and or. Why having such a process? Why having such a process is important. And then at this next meeting on perhaps the nineteenth. We can review those scenarios and then make a determination about which route we want to follow.
Yeah, then we can each evaluate whether or not we follow the process or not.
Right.
Did we follow the process or did we not follow the process? Or did we just give the job to a guy that we, we want to give to?
Well, and we have that opportunity right now. If we can review the data in a week and make that decision and if it's the pleasure of the council as a whole. I'm on board with whichever direction the council wants to go. I just think you have an opportunity to review some new information. And again, in the effort to be transparent and follow policy and procedure to the best of our ability. We now know better, so we should do better.
That's why I think a week would be appropriate to gather our thoughts, gather our ideas. On each one of us have an idea of what we want to go through to be able to. Because we actually talked about it. We've gotten seven different ideas and be able to. And then Chief Stoco would have an idea of what is going to or not going to. I can be here on the nineteenth if that meets the, but I don't know. I, I'm.
I can be here.
I don't know, I have a note here. I go back there, so.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here.
So we don't need an exec, do we need an executive session?
No, this is considered policy and business that needs to be held in public forums. To create or determine what process we're going to.
I, I get that, but I was, my question was, do we want to have another executive session to have an idea of what, kind of like what we did today? Are we done?
Okay, so, so, so let me, let me just. In this executive session, reviewing me, which you have a right to do in executive session.
We did.
So that covers your executive session for tonight because of my, you were reviewing my performance and what you're going to do. If you're going to try to do, I, I, I don't think you're going to get an executive session to have another discussion about policy or, or, or procedures. You're going to have to do that.
Right, yeah, that was, that was, that was, yeah, whatever it was. Yeah.
If, if I can ask the council if we want to do seven o'clock till the morning time. I know we've had it since before, that's caught me off guard. We want to try to six or stay at all the time.
I'm available at any time.
You there are, it's my thing.
Six would be better for me.
I don't think it would just maybe give the conversation more breathing room if it needed to find some things.
Okay, so at six o'clock?
On the nineteenth. Here.
Good.
Be here or be square.
Well, I just have to get the rest of the staff, I mean.
Oh, would that work or not?
We'll get it out on the.
Potentially need to discuss the process to replace the city manager.
Thank you, Karen.
Would it be, I just wonder if it's to consider, would it be considered the employment of a public officer? But either one, would it be to consider the employment or the process of a public officer? Is that what we're going to be doing?
I'm just.
We should, we should already have that information before we come.
Because I was talking about the agenda. The agenda, why somebody, I'm sorry. That's what, I'm just trying to think if it is, do we need to be more specific? Because we're either going to hire or we're going to go to a different way.
Could it be the process to hire?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was kind of going in.
Process to hire a city manager?
I mean.
What would you all prefer, show the agenda, read? The process to hire a city manager?
I suppose that's.
No, I don't think, I, I, I'm not in favor of that one. I, I, I think of four. I think we're going to either hire or we're going to figure out a process.
Well, I, I think.
You know what I'm saying?
Next meeting is providing the opportunity to discuss the various scenarios. And then at the end of that, perhaps we'll be ready to determine, do we follow a process? A, B, or C? And then we move forward with one of those choices.
Oh, I am.
I, so if we're, since we're in a live public thing, I would move that we look at all of the processes. That are suggested for hiring a city manager and be prepared to make possibly some decisions based on that at the next meeting.
What decisions?
Which process we would follow.
Which are basically two scenarios. We do a full recruitment, both internal and external. And that would require certain steps. Or we just open it up to the internal and it would require fewer steps. The long and short of it, that's just to summarize it.
So we got a motion?
The motion was to, at the next meeting, to see the information that Leslie has on the processes for hiring a city manager. And make decisions based on that information at the next meeting.
I, I don't know that the motion, you just, you want to direct staff to turn it on the agenda.
Try to summarize and.
Right.
Wrap it up, but you're right, it could die without a second.
It just did.
It just did?
I think, I, I think you just directed staff, what do you want us to put on the agenda?
We would tail it for now and meet on July nineteenth at six P M.
To look at.
To discuss processes for hiring a city manager.
Agreed.
All right, if nothing else, this morning, meeting is adjourned.